Thank you for attending. My name is Kate Kelly and I'm honored to serve as the Farmingdale Council of PTA President. If I can ask everyone to please stand for the fudge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. During the contested our election, our council organizes a night like this. We consider it a vital service by arranging and conducting a candidate's forum. It assists the community in making an informed judgment in the election in the Board of Education. Please keep in mind that tonight is just a glimpse into the candidates. It's an introduction, some questions, and a closing. If you feel like you need more information, we encourage you to seek out the candidates and ask as many questions as you need before the election. As you enter, you are handed yellow index cards. We have an abundance of questions. And again, the night is short, so we'll continue to take questions for the next few minutes, but keep in mind they won't all be asked. We only get through about a handful of questions. With that, I'd like to thank Nassau Region for coming to moderate and time keep tonight and introduce Pat Janko. She will be our moderator for this evening. And most important... And most importantly, we urge you to go out and vote on Tuesday, May 16th here at Howard House. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. As Kate said, my name is Patricia Janko. I'm from Nassau Region PTA and our timekeeper is Marita. Opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement. We will start in the order in which the candidates are seating according to their ballot position. Number one here. Questions will rotate according to the seating order, starting with the second candidate and will continue through that order. The second question will start with the third candidate and will continue in such an order until the last question is asked, which will be at eight thirty. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer, and this will allow for more questions to be asked. Closing statements. Candidates will start with their closing statements in the opposite order of the opening statement and continue in reverse order. You will have two minutes for each of their closing statements. While you are speaking and your time is up, you will be permitted to finish your sentence, but will not be able to start another sentence. Please pay attention to Marita, the timekeeper for this evening, and she will be holding up the time cards to let you know how much time is left. There's some rules during this question and answer period that I have to read. The moderator has sole jurisdiction over these proceedings once the forum has been turned over to me. Only residents of Farmingdale School District may ask questions. Questions will be screened by the moderator to avoid duplication, irrelevant, or otherwise nonanswerable questions. Questions may be directed toward one candidate. However, each candidate will have the opportunity to answer the question. Do not present views. Cross discussion will not be permitted. Pose your question responses directly. No campaign literature may be distributed during this forum. And as per the federal and state laws, such as the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Pregnancy Discrimination Act, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and others, legally bar interviewers from asking questions about race, sex, sexual orientation, religion, age, national origin, marital status, or family matters. With that, I'll introduce your candidates. Candidate number one, Dawn Luise. Candidate two, Parsa Karameen. Candidate three, Sheri Jones. Candidate four, Barbara Abud. Candidate five, Ralph Morales. And candidate six, Matt Wilson. Dawn, would you like to start with your opening statement?
Sure, thank you. First and foremost, I would like to thank the Farmingdale Council of PTAs for hosting this event. Thank you to Nassau Region for moderating tonight's event, and thank you all for coming out. My name is Dawn Luise. Some of you may know me because I taught your children to play tennis through Farmingdale Youth Council. Some of you may know me because I've helped your family adopt a pet through my volunteerism at a Wing and a Prayer animal rescue. Many of you may know me as one of your classmates from Farmingdale High School's class of 2001. I have spent my entire life here at Farmingdale. After graduating high school, I went on to receive my bachelor's in psychology in 2005 and my master's in elementary education from the Delphi University in 2006. I have since gone on to receive my certification to teach early childhood education, early childhood special education, and special education for grades one through six. I've been an elementary educator since 2006. I've been a teacher for the Great Lake Public Schools for 15 years. The majority of my years have been spent working with students with special needs in an integrative co-teaching classroom. I'm a proud mother of three children, Declan, Reese, and Willa, all of whom attend Salzman East Memorial. My volunteerism for the Farmingdale Public Schools began in 2017 when my oldest started kindergarten. Since then, I have served as PTA Council delegate, second vice president of legislation for PTA Council, reporting secretary and corresponding secretary for the Salzman East Memorial PTA, and a member of the Salzman East Memorial Building-wide Shared Decision-Making Committee. In addition to the PTA, I have served on the district-wide physical education committee and the district-wide shared decision-making steering committee. I volunteered for various PTA events and committees. While involved in the PTA, I quickly learned that PTA was so much more than just fundraising and fun events. It's about advocacy and being a voice for our students, our teachers, our families, and our community members. Like many of you, the Farmingdale School District is the reason why my husband and I have decided to buy a home here to raise our family. If given the opportunity, I'd like to continue to advocate for and service this community as a whole as a trustee for the Board of Education.
Welcome to my hometown of Farmingdale. I often thank my parents for choosing Farmingdale when I'm at forty years old. They left Iran to come to America in 1984. One of the main reasons why my parents chose Farmingdale was its academic excellence. But that was then. The traditional education we all received in the eighties and nineties allowed me to achieve the American dream as an immigrant in this great nation. I was fortunate enough to know in high school that I wanted to be a physical therapist. Just being a physical therapist wasn't enough for me. I wanted to serve my people and the community. So, within one year after graduating school and without taking any business courses, I opened up my own physical therapy practice. I followed a couple of very simple rules: hold yourself accountable to your patients and staff, and be fiscally responsible. I've been a clinical instructor for doctorate-level students for sixteen years. I even wrote a book to help patients choose the very best care for their needs. After a few years of running my practice, I thought, I'd love to serve my community more as a police officer. I took the Nassau County Police Officer Exam in 2007 and was blessed to have been sworn in in 2014. Upon graduation from the academy, I was fortunate enough to proudly serve and protect our very own Farmingdale community. My entire professional career has been service above self, and now I want to bring that same dedication and passion to serve you all in the Board of Education. I appeared before you tonight for the second year in a row because I have a vision for what our school district could be. I learned a long time ago that to complain about a situation while being a spectator in the stands is a futile enterprise. Sure, you may make a lot of noise, but that's all you are: noisy and useless. I tell my children that if you want to change something for the better, then you have to be willing to get into the fight to change it. There are things in this district that need serious change, from how we overspend our tax dollars, to lack of success of our curriculum, lack of transparency, to most importantly, how we can better protect our children. I'm Parsa Karameen, and I look forward to answering all of your questions.
Sheri?
Good evening. My name is Sheri Jones, and I'm honored to be seeking election onto the Farmingdale School District Board of Education. My husband and I live in Massapeepa Park. We've lived here for the past seven years with our three children, who are students in Albany Avenue and Howard Middle School. I'm actively involved in the Albany Avenue PTA. We are currently in serving my second term as vice president of arts and education and coordinator of the Reflections Program. I have devoted the bulk of my professional career to youth development and program administration. As director of an academic enrichment program, I created systems that enabled my staff to support their students in thriving inside and outside of their academically rigorous school environments. As a youth pastor, I provided a safe and nurturing environment for my kids, who I affectionately call them, to discern their purpose and equip them to achieve their life and career goals. For the past nine months, I've had the privilege of serving as an interim trustee on the school board, where I sit on the curriculum and wellness committees. In that time, I have done a lot of listening and observing the inner workings of the district. I've seen firsthand the hard work of our teachers and administrators. I've seen the innovative strategies used to spark curiosity and create a roadmap for success. I believe leadership is best done in collaboration, where everyone's voice is heard and everyone's input is valued. I've recently begun meeting with students, parents, teachers, and community members about how we as a district can better serve them. These conversations have helped me to identify where I can add value and make a difference. I want to be a voice for our underrepresented populations, specifically students of color and our LGBTQ students. I have chosen to run for election because I believe that the Farmingdale School District is inherently good, and I also believe there is room for improvement. It would be easy for me to stand on the sidelines and point out the problems, but instead I choose to jump into the ring and work to bring about solutions that will best serve our students.
Barbara?
Everyone currently serving on the board and those seeking to serve on the board bring various strengths. My background is as a sales leader and cybersecurity professional for over twenty-five years. My management experience has enabled me to tap into various skills over the years that I believe would benefit all members of the community when I'm elected as a trustee. This includes setting up and creating budgets, managing expenses, and meeting the expectations of shareholders. It also means having a pulse on the needs of the people depending on us. Outside of my career, I am a passionate community volunteer. When the pandemic hit, like many parents, I felt helpless and voiceless when it came to the emotional and academic struggles our children were facing. With the mission of empowering... Oh, excuse me. So, myself and a local Dale or Dad who's here tonight started a chapter of Moms for Liberty with the mission of empowering parents within our education. I have been telling parents for three years now that the most important thing we can do is run for our local school boards. Because those running our local school boards have way more impact on our children, our taxes, and our daily lives than anyone running the federal government. Being an involved parent for me also includes volunteering for the PTA. I served on the school board as the... Uh, excuse me, on the PTA board as the first VP and serving on various committees over the years. I'm really passionate about our children's education because the opportunities we provide children today will pay massive dividends for all our futures. My vision and why I'm running for the board is about providing children a safe and intellectually challenging learning environment, enabling them to think critically while improving learning outcomes, all while being a steward of our taxpayers and looking for ways to reduce the tax burden to ensure future generations of Dailers are able to thrive in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ralph Morales. Back in May of 2014, I had the privilege of being elected to the position of Farmingdale Board of Education trustee. My wife, Joanne, and I had five children, all of whom were students in this district. I was very involved and continue to be involved in Farmingdale PAL as a volunteer coach, director, executive board member, and vice president. Farmingdale, you know me. I'm the guy who coached and cheered on your kids when they succeeded. I told them to be proud of their efforts when they fell short. I was the one who encouraged your kids to give their best effort, to be the best version of themselves, and to always, above all else, be the best teammate that they could be for their friends. I believe in service. A Board of Education trustee is, above all else, a public servant. Service to me is not an option. It is my mission, my calling, my legacy. Service means selflessly tending to the needs of others above self. I am called to serve all, and that is my mission statement as Farmingdale School's Board of Education trustee. Every single parent in this district, including those seated at this very table, have my word that if I have the privilege of being re-elected as a trustee on May 16th, I will be a tireless aggressive advocate for every single child in this district, period. No qualifications, no exceptions, no questions. My word is my bond. At the end of the day, I am your friend, your children's coach, your children's advocate. I'm a Dale or who cares about public service and reveres all it represents. I want you to vote for me because you trust me to do right by you and your children. I want you to vote for me because you can be assured that I will selflessly serve you and your children above all, above myself. You have all become my extended family, and I hope I have the privilege to continue to represent all of you. Thank you.
Matt?
Thank you. What a great show of democracy. This is so exciting to see you all. This is America right here involved in your local communities. That's what I'm talking about. I'm Matt Wilson. My wife and I planted our roots in Farmingdale eleven years ago. I'd recently returned from a deployment to Afghanistan, and our oldest daughter was one-year-old at the time. We were ready to make up for the year that we'd missed together. Now, fast forward, we have three beautiful children. Do I do anything for? Which you all know, as many of you are parents yourselves. I've spent seven years mentoring Farmingdale children as a Girl Scout leader and Cub Scout leader for my son and my two daughters. I've enjoyed teaching them community service and skills of self-reliance, like farming, programming, first aid, investing, and my favorite, navigating through the woods. I've loved every second. I learned that a child can rise to any challenge if you show them that you believe in them. I'm proud of my professional career. Besides serving our country as a U.S. Army captain in the military police, I've served in executive advisory roles in both the public sector and the private sector. In one example, I advised on strategy and budget cycle planning in the taxpayer-funded Department of Homeland Security, which has a multi-billion-dollar budget. I helped implement recommendations from the 9/11 Commission and the intelligence community. I helped oversee PricewaterhouseCoopers' billion-dollar acquisition of Booz &amp; Company in New York. I helped oversee PricewaterhouseCoopers' billion-dollar acquisition of Booz and Company in New York and London. I crowdfunded a children's story about Afghanistan for which I appeared on Afghan TV and Dari. I rescued a community movie theater from COVID bankruptcy, which I later resold. And I most recently served as a Vice President at a Fortune 500 company. But my most important accomplishment is my family, with my best friend, my wife. I was raised that when you see a problem you can help with, you stop and you help, especially if you have a unique talent for it. I'm offering to volunteer my time and experience for my neighbors, who I've come to love. I see ways to improve academics. I see ways to plan for a fair budget that holds the line on taxes. And I will strive to make sure that Farmingdale parents have a seat at the table at our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with question number one with Parsa. What do you think are the top needs of our district?
The top needs, number one, most important one, is that we need to improve the safety of our students. Last year, I sat up on this stage, and the very first question was to me again about should we have armed security at our schools? There are other school districts that have armed security that care enough about their kids. Like banks do about their money inside, they have armed security to protect them. I believe that if we have armed security outside, and there's any kind of threat that enters a school that wants to do our kids harm, someone must have a firearm on them in order to combat that threat. I'm a police officer, and I control this area. Oftentimes, I thought to myself, if a call came out about a school shooting, how fast could we get there? We have BSO units, which are special operation units. They're the ones with the war rifles. We're the ones with the pistols. The fastest people to get there are us. By the time they get there, many minutes have gone by. A armed security guard can be outside with a phone that has the cameras of the school on it so they know exactly where the threat is. They can assess the threat. They can phone in and let us know exactly. Let the police know what the threat looks like, where they are, what kind of weapons they have. And the police can be on their way, and usually this armed security guard is usually a police officer and ex-military. Any one of you in this room that's not a police officer, even us who are trained, when we're on the radio and we're trying to call any kind of calling, you are so frantic, you leave out information. Those are minutes and seconds that we cannot waste. This person can phone it in, give the vital information to the police officers. He can go in and, most importantly, address the threat and save lives. The other thing we must focus on is academics. Academics is not where they need to be. I believe we need to go back to a traditional way of academics where we can teach kids, first of all, how to write recursive, go back to teaching kids how to read again, so people don't have to get tutors to teach their kids how to read. All the stuff that's out there, you know, Mathnasium, Kumon, all these things. People shouldn't have to pay taxes, school taxes, and then pay for extra.
Do you need a question?
Sure. Do you think, what are the top needs of our district?
I would say a top need for us is to actually continue to maintain our budget so that we can provide programs and services that meet expansive, the expansive needs of our students. Right now, we've identified the wellness and achievement gaps that we are experiencing in our district, and I think we need to bring in, apply the necessary strategies to close that achievement gap and those wellness gaps. We see that there are some students, certain subgroups of our population, who may be struggling. And I think what that says is that we have identified where we have fallen short, and we need to now apply the appropriate strategies so that all of our students can be performing at their optimal best levels. I also believe that our district has responsibility to make sure that everyone feels included. And in my conversations with some of our underrepresented groups within our school district, there's a level of disconnection, disenfranchisement, disenchantment. And I think we have to begin to have those honest conversations with everyone in our community to understand what is it that we are not doing, what's missing from our students' experience with so many of them, so many of our students of color feel like they are on the periphery and not really included. And if those things are not addressed, it can impact how students perform. If their social and emotional wellness is lacking, it impacts learning. And so we need to also look at those issues as well. Thank you.
Barbara?
The role of the school board is to serve the community and the taxpayers as well as the children. One of the things that I think is a challenge here in Farmingdale is our school board has become an extension of the district and not the taxpayers. And that's something we need to address. As a school board member, what I want to look at is where are our taxes being spent? Are we being fiscally responsible with how we spend it? And is it going to the needs of all of our children? Discipline, we've spoken with many teachers in various levels of our schools. How it is really one that stood out to me, that discipline, the teachers have no recourse when it comes to some of the discipline, and it's becoming a distraction to the children's education. Parsa talked a little bit about security. I actually want to take it from an internal security standpoint. My background in cybersecurity brings a wealth of knowledge. Reviewing how we're securing our children's Chromebooks, what security measures we're taking is something that I feel strongly we need to do a better job on. We've uncovered quite a bit of materials that are either politically charged or sexually charged that are available to our children right here in Farmingdale School District. And these are things that all of the parents that we've spoken with have expressed to us. Then there's the special education parents that we've worked with and spoken to. It's really disheartening when we learn the amount of tax dollars that goes to those students in that education when it doesn't appear that it's actually reaching those students. So I'd like to take a closer look at how some of the American Rescue dollars are being spent and where those funds are actually going for our children.
Ralph?
Thank you. When you think about needs of our community, I think what we all do is return to our children. What are the needs of our children? That's what we do as Board of Education trustees. That's our primary goal. That's our focus. That's our mission. And when you think about what the children need, you want them to get a good education. And what we've done here in Farmingdale during my time on the board for the last nine years is enhance, revisit, and modify the curriculum that we have for our kids. We have an amazing portrait of a graduate mandate. And what that mandate calls for is not only to have us appreciate the wonderful diversity that we have in this community, not only to appreciate the great friendships and the bonds that we have with each other, but to recognize that we have a responsibility. And our responsibility is to ensure that every student has an opportunity. Every student has a pathway to success. And a pathway to success can be defined in many different ways. All of us parents can probably say what the pathway to success is for our kids, and we'd have about a thousand different pathways. But here in Farmingdale, we try to give every student that opportunity. If you want to be in fine arts, if you want to be someone that studies music, we have it for you. If you want to have rigorous academic curriculum and go to the best colleges in this country, we have it for you. If you're one of those children who has special needs and is classified and has the need for services to ensure that they can attain a degree and grow and live in this community, we have it for you. If you are one of those children for whom college is not necessarily an option, it's not for everybody. We have an amazing CTE program, Career Technical Education Program, that is top-notch, that is far beyond anything that any other district has. So if you want to work with your hands, if you want to work on computers, if you want to go into construction, if you want to write computer applications, you know what? We have it for you. So that right out of high school, you have an opportunity to have a great education. That's what I am standing for. That's what I believe our needs are, and that's where we are going as a district.
Thank you. Matt?
All right, top three. There's a lot of work to do, but I'll narrow it down to three. All right, first and foremost, I believe it's very important to hold the tax levy because if we can no longer afford to live here, there will be no community left. I think local municipalities like the town and the county got the message years ago, and they said, "It's gonna hurt. We're gonna figure it out, but we're gonna look for overhead administrative costs. We're gonna figure out how to hold the line on taxes so Long Island has a future." I believe very strongly we need to be creative about figuring that out, without impacting the classroom, and for looking for opportunities at overhead and administrative level. Second is to improve reading at the elementary level. I have been disappointed in the four curriculum presentations I observed in the last year. I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. I'm always gonna tell it to you guys how it is. I believe the board needs a place of, needs to be a place of accountability and oversight, and I'm not happy with the four curriculum presentations I saw this year. They were not specific enough or tangible enough, or going in the wrong direction toward ambiguity and lower standards. And finally, my third one that I added to the top was not on my radar at all when I started this campaign. I was very surprised when we opened up an email box for the campaign to be getting inquiries, complaints, some severe complaints, some soft complaints about special education. That wasn't even on my radar. I have children pulled out for IEP for speech. We always talk about how great it is. I didn't really see what was going on. But because so many families have brought it to my attention, I feel like that is your role as a trustee too. You need to respond to what you're hearing. My third top priority would be, I think we need to have some sort of public session going deeper about each special need type, how we're contracting for it, and how we're supporting each type here from both our staff in the building, our contractors that we service with, and our families.
You want?
Sure. So as an educator of seventeen years, I can speak from personal experience that our children need to feel safe and secure in their learning environment. Some of the other candidates have spoken specifically tonight about physical safety, but I also want to elaborate a little more on the mental health piece of that and feeling emotionally safe in the classroom. You know, we've been through the COVID piece, and we were, you know, I know just personally as an educator, you, I'm hopeful that children have moved past this, but surveys have been done by New York State PTA that have actually shown that families are still really concerned about the level of anxiety, depression, and other mental health issues that have come about as a result of the COVID pandemic. We need to make sure that we continue to urge the state and work with the state to get the mental health services that are necessary to ensure that all of our children have exactly what it is that they need in order to be successful. In terms of special needs and working with children with special needs, there have been a lot of issues that have been brought to my attention, not only just as a classroom teacher, but just from experience with my own child who has special needs, about getting appropriate state resources. So we need to make sure that we are working together as a district to make sure we can do whatever we can to the best of our ability to make sure that all of our children are getting the appropriate services that they deserve and are legally promised to their IEPs. We also just need to make sure too that we are protecting all of our children. We want to protect them from all the politics that surround them outside of the schools and make sure that that doesn't get into our classrooms. We want to make sure that our children feel safe and supported to do the best that they can. Thank you.
Sheri, I'm gonna begin question two with you. What achievement gaps do you see within this district, and what are your plans for addressing those gaps?
Well, I know, I'm currently sitting on the curriculum committee, and we've done a lot of deep diving into looking at the achievement gaps. And it was shared in the presentation last week at the board meeting that we have identified that there's a significant achievement gap for our English language learning students and some of our other underrepresented groups. And I was talking with our superintendent about it, and I was sharing that when we look at those test scores and we see that, okay, we can identify that these are the groups who are not performing as well, I don't want us to look at that as the student's failure, as the student's weakness. What I see is when we identify those achievement gaps, it's showing us where we are falling short, how we are not meeting the needs, the academic needs, the learning styles of certain students. And so now it requires us as a district to look at how do we now help these students to learn? What is their learning style? And I'm grateful to know that, and sitting in the curriculum committee and going on learning walks and sitting amongst the teachers and the administrators, there's conversations about that. How do we tailor, custom-fit our curriculum to meet the needs of individual students' learning styles? And that's something that is happening right now. The curriculum that we have is a living curriculum. And what I mean by that is that it's constantly being adjusted, it's constantly being revamped and revived to fit the needs of each individual learner. It's not a one-size-fits-all curriculum. And I believe that's really how we begin to meet those achievement gaps that we identify.
Barbara, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yeah, please.
What achievement gaps do you see within the district, and what are your plans for addressing these gaps?
When you look at achievement gaps, you also need to look outside the district. How are we comparing to our peer neighborhoods? And right now, Farmingdale is way below some of our comparative districts. And when I hear our current school board members discuss, "We will, we should," one, being here nine years, what have you actually accomplished over that time in improving it? Because in two thousand and eighteen, Northside became designated as a comprehensive support response school before the pandemic and long after Ralph Morales was on the board. What has he done to improve that since? There's a lot of promises, a lot of futures. What myself, Parsa, and Matt have done is just research. We asked parents, we looked into, as I was a homeschool mom last year during the pandemic, I learned about curriculums. I had to do that all for myself. So I used that knowledge to see what would actually help, what's tried and true. There's a lot of, "We're going to have a living curriculum that's gonna change, and we'll revisit it." But what if our children, it's not the right fit for our children, we're venting the wheel and then going back, and by the time we figure out if it's working or not, our children might have been lost in the system. We need to do a better job of making curriculum a priority. The Blue Ribbon designation that we hear a lot about, I haven't seen any defined measurables. And as a school board, that is where we can help guide the district to make sure that those measurables are in place and that we're actually achieving those goals for our students. Thank you.
Ralph?
Yes, I just want to thank Barbara for bringing it up. In fact, Northside has been off that list for a couple of years. Now, as far as like empty promises, if you look at the current data, actually, across the board, Farmingdale schools have been doing amazingly since we came out of the pandemic. Every school, they're improved dramatically. That's what the data shows. Every school, Northside, Woodward, Salzman, Albany Avenue, every school, the high school, the middle school. Now, is there work to be done? Absolutely. There will be work to be done. My last day as a board member, the person that replaces me is gonna have work to be done. But don't misrepresent the facts. Our schools are doing amazingly. Our children are doing amazingly since coming out of the pandemic. The data shows that every school has improved dramatically. In terms of the gaps, in terms of closing those achievement gaps, that's what Blue Ribbon is about. That's what Portrait of a Graduate is about. I grew up in a very poor neighborhood in Jamaica, Queens. And the one thing I hated was when people told me, "You're not gonna do anything. You're coming from Jamaica. You ain't nothing." That's all I heard growing up, and it was bothersome. And I refused to live up or live down to that stereotype. In Farmingdale, the data shows that the children that have the most gaps are ELLs, students who have English as a second language, our children who have special needs that are classified. We have twenty percent of our student body is classified. And then underprivileged students who come from very poor, broken families. There's no laughing matter. There's no casting aspersions. Our goal, and what we have been doing, and what the data does show, and what we will do going into the future, is we will lift up those children so that the achievement gap is something that we can say to those children, "We're gonna rise you up, and you're gonna be at the top level." We're not lowering anybody to meet anyone anywhere. Every child is special. Every child is important. And our mandate is to lift them up and to close those achievement gaps by making all children high achievers.
Matt?
All righty, yes, ma'am. Okay, our strengths in Farmingdale are our music, our arts, our competitive sports. Okay, our strengths in Farmingdale are our music, our arts, our competitive sports, and our community spirit. Our weaknesses are every region's subject in the high school and all, uh, third through eighth grade academics, unfortunately. Hang with, hang with me on this one. So the Blue Ribbon designation, I equate to be kind of like the most improved award. I, I remember being a kid on the basketball team. I got the most improved and I felt horrible. It's like, that's the award I got most improved? Blue Ribbon is like most improved. We shouldn't be striving for most improved. We should be striving for the best, the best, to be honest. Now bear with me where I see the opportunity in Farmingdale. We do not need this big bureaucratic curriculum department. We can go back to traditional education with responsibility on the principal and the educator for the most classroom impact. My concern is that with a bureaucratic curriculum department, and I've seen so many bureaucratic organizations like it in the federal government and in large corporations, is that you keep adding jobs and powerpoints and you get further and further from the real impact. And that's what I've seen. I want to make sure there's impact in the classroom. As such impact, I have a big focus on phonics at the reading level, or excuse me, at the elementary level. At the elementary level, we are still using length, uh, elements of what's called whole language reading. It's kind of this like seventies style reading that came out of Columbia University. Kind of asks a child to guess the word based on the picture and take cues from the book. That has proven to be an ineffective method of study for a very, very long time. And I know we're using it because I see us spending over 120 grand on Heinman Publishing every year. I see us spending over 30 grand on Columbia University professional, professional development. You got to understand, when I'm talking about hold the line on taxes, I see this intersection on administrative overhead spending that is not actually reading the class, reaching the classroom. All I'm talking about is being smart with our spending and making sure we're doing smart investments of with the principal and with the educator in the class, like phonics-based reading in the classroom. And just one last one that has a big impact on both academics and spending is the Chromebooks. Maybe we can get back to Chromebooks. Thank you.
Sure. So not to ride on the coattails of some of the other candidates who've spoken about it, but there are achievement gaps. But that's not isolated to here just in Farmingdale. Even in the school district that I, I teach in, which is a top rated school district on Long Island, there are gaps for certain groups of students. And we need to really work closely to look at the data that shows us where those gaps are, what specific groups are falling into those gaps and what we can best do, what best practices there are in order to support those students. For me, as an educator and as a parent in the district, one of the most important things that we need to do here in Farmingdale is look a little more closely at the way in which we provide reading instruction. We have to start back from the beginning, the early basics of how children learn the language and acquire the language and learning more specifically about the letters and sounds and using that to help them have strategies that are efficient strategies to help them when they're struggling to decode a word. If anyone doesn't know what decoding means, it's when you are really reading the word. By teaching our children more specifically from the beginning, going back to identifying the letters and sounds and being very explicit is something that we really need to incorporate more into our Farmingdale public schools. Studies show that if children aren't learning how to read and the gap wide is by third grade, it almost becomes almost impossible to close that gap. I think that the Blue Ribbon initiative that our district is looking to, is moving forward with and pursuing is a starting point, but what we really need to do is look at the curriculum a little more closely, see what fits the needs of our learners and evaluate programs so we can make sure that we're closing those achievement gaps effectively. Thank you.
Do you need me to repeat the question?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm glad that Mr. Morales and the rest of the board were so ecstatic that they got finally off the, the list. He got on in 2014 and four years later, in 2018, Northside was put on the CSI list, which is comprehensive support improvement. Basically meaning that they were in the bottom of 5% of Title I. And my stu, my kids went to Northside, so it's nice that that's there. And we're finally getting off that, you know, four years after he got on, we were designated. Howard was also labeled a targeted school for improvement in that same year. So I'm glad that we're, we're happy to be off the naughty list and, uh, we're using methods that aren't working. And now we're going to try to use this Blue Ribbon program which says, you know, don't level up. We'll just kind of bring it back down and make it so everybody can, you know, we'll close the gaps. So from whoever's at the bottom, we're not going to try to bring them up. We'll just kind of make it so the people in the top aren't really striving for more. We got to bring back phonics, the kids, how they used to learn. You have kids now that are trying to learn and they're looking at a picture. Instead of sounding out the word and learning how to read, they're looking at a picture and hopefully that that picture will tell them what it is. Math, my kids now, we have parents that are invited to come in and learn new math. I didn't know we needed to know that. We have engineers that put people on the moon, but now we need to learn new math. My kids draw a picture, 100 boxes just to tell me what 50 times 2 is. Maybe we should get away from the curriculum that they have now and explore out in the traditional way of learning, the way we learned, the way our grandparents learned, the way everybody else learned that led to all the technological advances we have in this country now.
Thank you. We'll start question three with Barbara. How do you plan to increase transparency in our district between parents, administration, and the school board?
As a parent that's been coming to school board meetings regularly for the last three years, one of the challenges that I, sitting out in the audience feel is there's a lot of discussions that happen behind the scenes and it makes it really difficult for someone sitting there trying to understand what's being voted on, why it's being voted, and how they came to that decision. I think anything that we can, and I understand there is executive sessions, but I think it's overused here in Farmingdale. I think anything that we can pull out and have a conversation in front of the, the community needs to be. We need to know why a decision was made, how each trustee voted for it, and what collaboration happened in between. As we're coming into an election, last year, we had no idea which trustee stood for which issue because they all voted unanimously over and over again. So I think that needs to be a, a key part is communicating what we're voting on and why it's being voted for in front of the community. And also, why are we on this stage? I, I, I just got to say that this is supposed to be meet the candidates, right? And this, the board sits up here all elevated, removed from anyone in the community that they can interact with. The microphone is usually all the way back by the back, you know, entrance. It, we need to start being a community together. There's, I am no different than anyone of you if I was sitting on the board, except that I have a vote to represent your voices. And that's what I want to do.
When you talk about transparency, look at what Farmingdale does. We have a website that has everything on it. Any question you have, and we, we talk about that all the time. If you have any questions about the budget, if you have any questions about curriculum, we explain it. There are presentations. The directors and the administrators go through those presentations every month during the board meetings to provide as much information as they possibly can within the time constraints that we have. Then there's always the caveat, if you have any questions, here's our number, here's our email. Look on our website, look at, look at the website, get the information. That's transparency. You want to educate yourself, we educate you by three ways, presentation, by discussion. And if you have any questions, we have it all published. There's nothing hidden, there's nothing buried, it's all there. And we're open to criticism. No one's impervious to criticisms, no one thinks that they're perfect. If you have an issue, if you have a problem, we have two public sessions, 30 minutes each, where you can come up and express your concerns at the microphone that is not in the back of the room. It's right in the front of the room. And you can come and talk to your questions, you can express your ideas. At the end of the meetings, you may know if you're here, the board members come down. We're not up here high and mighty, we're members of the community. I'm Ralph, I live in North Massapequa. I just happen to be a board member. That's how we approach it. We're, we're you, you are us. We are individuals that are working together for the same goal. So when you talk about transparency, that's what it is. If you have a question, if you have a problem, if you have an issue, reach out to us, talk to us, come up to the microphone, come to the meetings. We ask our public to come to the meetings every month. I would love to see this many people in our board meetings every month. I would love to have it be SRO. I'd love it to be so crowded that we could barely breathe because that's what this is about. When we are invested in our community, when we are working together, when we are pulling on the rope from the same direction, that is transparency. That is how we improve and that is what we are aspiring for. So transparency, we're here, I'm here, I'm always here. I stand by my word, I will stand up for each one of you. And if you have any questions, please come and ask. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, transparency. Laura, Portis and I have talked a lot about this since COVID, since our kids were muzzled in masks for two years straight. And we just started getting involved more with the board after that one. We could just knock our kids out of the masks. Uh, in transparency, honestly, I don't want to copy a lot of Barb because we talk about this a, a lot, but, um, anything that's eligible for public session, I would like as a trustee to discuss it in public after public session. The public session is turned into an award ceremony at the beginning, which is great to recognize a community, but you're just like, if the point of the session is a, is a discussion, you're kind of losing people by then. And because so much is discussed in private session, by the time the board votes, it's really just numbers. It's a citing and consent agenda with numbers on it and you aren't really seeing it for discussion. You know, these are seven elected officials, you know, hard, hard work and volunteer elected officials. They're unpaid volunteers, okay? But at the same time, they're elected officials. And it's like Barb said, it's very important to know where they all stand because you're voting for them. And if it's always a unanimous vote, not a public discussion, it's, it's hard to see what's going on. But transparency in the schools though, I think, um, transparency with the hot topics are hard. And Ms. Louiezi mentioned it a little bit, like, help keep this political bias out of the classroom. It's, it's in every other part of our life, but at least let's protect the classroom. I have one example of a transparency type of topic where a whistleblower had given me a Farmingdale School District gender change or name change form, um, that when I did a freedom of information request, I was told there is no such form. It was denied as no records exist in February 2023. But there was a board email to, not to be transparent, there was a board email to another middle school parent saying it did exist. So then I was confused, like, what is this form? And the form reads that the parent does not have to give permission for a child to go to a stat, a faculty at Howard Middle School or the high school to request a gender change or a name change. And it's just hot topics like that, you know? It's like, we need transparency for the parents. When a form like this exists, they need to know about it. And our policy should be to let the parents know. That's one example. There's one. Thank you.
Yep, so, um, so I do think the district has made some strides in becoming more transparent. And I know that's something that has been shared at some of the Board of Education meetings. And in particular, I'm talking about the curriculum. Right now, um, the curriculum for grades K through eight is forward facing and it's accessible on the Farmingdale School website. I do also understand that private matters related to personnel and personal matters need to stay within the executive session in order to protect those matters that are being discussed. But I also do think that if we want to be more transparent and make our meetings more accessible to the community at large, that we may need to consider changing the format of the meetings. As someone who does regularly attend meetings, it can, it's a bit of a time commitment because the meetings are two to sometimes closer to three hours in duration. And we have to be respectful of the community and the community's timeline when planning those meetings because we want them to be effective and we also want them to be open for the community to attend. And it's very difficult for many of our families to be able to come to meetings that require that long of a time commitment. So in order to be a little more transparent and also meet the needs of our community, I'm just thinking that maybe, you know, if I'm elected to the board, something that I would want to bring to the table is talking more about changing the format of the meetings, hosting public work sessions that are separate from other board affairs. So that way, we can also include more people in the community to be part of those conversations that are really important to, that affect us all. Thank you.
So I have a little story about transparency or the lack thereof. My boy's in sixth grade and when we got his, you know, his schedule for his classes that said science enrichment, I thought, so wonderful, that's great, even though we're at 33% proficiency in eighth grade science. Hopefully he'll just kind of figure that out in two years. So he comes home one day and he tells me that Dad, we, we want something in civic engagement today. And I said, civic engagement is not on your, on your course. He said, oh, we do it on Fridays. And the video was about a poet who champions critical race theory. So I looked up this poem. And one of his works was Ode to the Only Black Boy in Class and telling black kids you're going to get shot by the police. So I thought, that doesn't sound like science debate. So I reached out to the superintendent and after about 10 to 12 emails back and forth to try to figure out who is on this team that gives you this information that you then fed and allowed to be put in front of my 11-year-old and everybody else's 11-year-old. After a couple of emails, I finally got the answer that it was three people, which is shocking that it took three emails to figure that out. And then when I asked who these people are, could I find out who they are? Are they teachers? Who are they? You don't need to know that. I went and met with the superintendent and head of curriculum. And after about an hour, I wanted to pull my hair out and said, you're literally not going to tell me who these three people are that are putting content in front of children. That's alarming. So that's a story about transparency. Another thing I like to reiterate is the fact that out of the seven people that sit here, I don't know anything about the way they choose to be on one side of the topic or on the other side of the topic. I wouldn't know if they were for the masks, without the masks, for certain things that are in here that bother us or don't bother us. We have no idea. The executive session.
Quiet, please. If there are any further disruptions, I'm going to have to stop the forum.
Sir, it was an example. Thank you. So now where was I? So before, that's as an example, we don't know what people think about major issues that are going on because they use the executive sessions to hide behind it and then they come out with a unanimous vote. And then when we ask them about it, they say, oh, you don't know all the discussions we had back there to come to our decision. Yeah, we don't know. That's the whole point, this lack of transparency. We said it last year and we said it again.
In terms of transparency, I will have to say, speaking from my personal experience prior to me on the board, that I found, um, the district to be pretty transparent in terms of what's happening. I've been impressed with the fact that there's so much information that can be found on the website. Um, as a parent, I have had conversations with, if there were certain things that were a concern to me, I've been able to quickly, um, be in touch with the teacher, the principal, sometimes even the superintendent. This is all prior to my serving, um, as an interim board member. But I will speak on behalf of, uh, some students of color. As I said, I've been having conversations with our underrepresented groups. And there is something they've identified in terms of a need of greater transparency. And that is when, um, there are times when they feel that they may, um, share some concern, some issue has happened and the issue is addressed, but they feel circling back to them to check in to see, well, how are you doing? How are you faring since this incident has happened? And I know, excuse me, and I know that for them, it's part of that the transparency is needed to say, I care about you, right? I see you, we heard you, we've done something about it, but now I'm coming back just to see about you as an individual. But it also, um, in talking about the board and not sharing our stance on certain issues and we vote unanimously, one of the characteristics of being on the board is to build consensus. And so in our board meetings, while there may be times where we disagree on certain issues, we work that out and then we come to a point where we can build a consensus and then vote, um, how we feel.
Question four, we'll start with Ralph. As a school board trustee, you work to create a fair budget. What are your budget priorities and how will you watch how the money is spent?
Other than educating our kids, maintaining a budget is the most important thing that we do. And for each year that I've been on the board since 2014, we have consistently come in under the tax cap levy while maintaining services for our children and while being physically prudent. When you look at the numbers, it's very important to understand the truth. And the truth is that the way the budget is being portrayed by my opponents is simply untrue. There are 32 administrators in the Farmingdale School District, 1,200 employees. 3.4% of the budget is on administrative salaries. Se, almost 76% of the budget is for instruction and programs. This budget is well thought out. This budget, if you've come to the budget presentations that have been done out in the night of the last couple of months with Paul Deffendini and Mike Mottisi, when you listen to the detail, when you see the detail, open the slides and again on the website, everything is spelled out. The budget is well formulated. Now, the, the budget did go up this year, but when you think about why it went up, there's inflationary costs that hit, hit us as citizens, it's hit the district. The rise in cost of healthcare has increased astronomically and that is part of why this budget went up. But it went up by 6%, 6.5%. And that's a little higher than usual. But when you think about it, what are we doing with this money? We are providing services to our children. We are providing services to our children. Again, twenty percent of our children are classified. We have homeless children that live in this district. McKinney-Bento kids, which is essentially kids that are homeless. The cost of each child is, it varies. The cost of a general education child differs dramatically from a special education child, which differs dramatically from a McKinney-Bento child. We are aware of it. And trust me when I tell you that every dollar was well thought out because at the end of the day, we have to provide for our kids. We have to ensure that their services are met, and that is what the budget is about. The truth is in the numbers, not in the talk in the community. Look at the numbers, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about them.
All right, we're talking about money. All right, my big theme is to hold the line on taxes and to allocate more funds that are on administration and central costs, not just administration, but central costs, back into the classroom for the educator in that classroom. As a board member, we're here to represent the child and the taxpayer. We need to work with all other partners, union, staff, but we are here to represent the taxpayer and the child. Now, I don't want you to hear me say this and say, this is the guy that's gonna fire everybody. No, heck no, of course not. I get paused when I look at something and what are the facility projects next year? Second one I see on the list is to repaint the Howard Auditorium. You're sitting in the Howard Auditorium tonight. You think this beautiful room needs to be repainted? Another thing, oh, okay, maybe you think it needs to be repainted. Another thing that gives me pause is when I see the amount that we spend on Chromebooks through a vendor called CDW Government Incorporated. We are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on Chromebooks, and I started looking around comparing to other school districts that have policies where if it breaks, there's a family responsibility to either pay for insurance or to replace it. We are going through crazy amounts of Chromebooks. And I'm not talking about even staff yet or organization, I'm just talking about vendor expenses. When we get into what happened with the budget increasing this year, there was a big change in employee benefits. For every one hundred dollars we spend in salary, we spend another fifty dollars in employee benefits. For every one hundred dollars in salary, we spend another fifty dollars in employee benefits. That's not a standard, and that's why I benchmark so much. So I know you saw in the budget presentation that there is a big increase in health insurance costs. Well, you absorbed that as the taxpayer because you pay eighty percent of health insurance costs. Those agreements are coming up, and we need to look at what's fair to the taxpayer. I want to be very clear. My first priority is looking at things that are vendor expenses and contracted services and administrative staff that do not impact the classroom. I'm looking at the Howard Middle School. Where at the grade level, we have an assistant principal for a grade with a dean and a psychologist and a social worker and a secretary for that assistant principal. I'm getting this stuff. Anyways, hope you got the point across. Thank you.
Yes, as a school board trustee, you work to create a fair budget. What are your budget priorities and how will you watch how the money is spent?
So first and foremost, if elected to the Board of Education, my budget priority would be to make sure that as much as the budget as possible is going directly to the children. We need to make sure that the budget is really focusing on direct services that our children are in need of. Currently, according to our, the budget information that's presented on the Farmingdale website, seventy-five point forty-four-one percent of the budget is allotted to programming. And that's really important because our children need so much to be successful. And we want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to spend our money efficiently so that it's best servicing, sorry, servicing our learners. We also just want to continue to try to be fiscally, as fiscally responsible as possible. We want to make sure that we are keeping Farmingdale an affordable place for our families to live. I was afforded the luxury of being able to raise my family here. My mom raised me here with my brother. My husband and his family were raised here, and his dad was also a product of the Farmingdale Public Schools and raised his children here as well. So we want to make sure that we keep the taxes within the tax cap levy so that our families can also afford to come back here with their children and raise their families here in the Farmingdale Public Schools. We also want to make sure that we're being thoughtful of all taxpayers when we're making the budget, especially our senior citizens, because we want to make sure that we're making and keeping Farmingdale an affordable place for them as well. Thank you.
Last year, when we set up here, the same list of things that were going to be cut if the budget didn't pass, we're on the same, the same list that we're gonna be used this year. So I just love how the board will sit there and take pictures whenever time the sports program does very well, that Dale's won the LAC this year, there's a great contract that's being played. The board never misses an opportunity to stand up there and say, you know, hey, we're here too, take a picture with us and write on the coat tags what the kids did. So, that being said, it's just funny and odd that every time there's a musical program, you guys sit up there and take pictures with them, that's the very first thing you're gonna cut if your budget doesn't pass. You never sit back and look and say, hey, where else can we spend our money? Where else can we save our money? Central admin costs are high, teachers are not getting, in terms of the ratio of what teachers can get compared to other schools, compare that to the central admin costs, teachers are getting less here. So maybe if we allocate the funds like any person that, like me, has a small business, and I want to make sure I keep the doors open, keep the lights on, and pay my employees, I do this every day. And Matt does this in where he works. So we have to make sure that we're fiscally responsible in spending money on what is important first to the children and also being beholden to the taxpayers. Thank you.
I find it interesting that every time we talk about the budget not being passed, we hear someone say the first thing that will be cut will be the music program, and that's a fallacy. It sounds sexy, it sounds controversial, it gets people up in arms because you know how much we love our music department here in Farmingdale. But the reality is, if the budget is not passed and we have to make reductions, it's not focused on any one particular area. It will be paid because we will have to find some way to make reductions and balance the budget, but it will be spread across all different areas. So it would not just be the music program, it would have to be taking a little bit here and there. And some of those reductions would be something like, for instance, and this is not an exact example, but if there are three sections of a biology class being offered in the high school, we may have to reduce that down to two sections of it, right? So there are all these ways that we would look at, no, it would be a shared pain, right? All of us would have to share in balancing the budget. It would not hit just one particular department. But the other thing I want to say in terms of budget priorities, we do have a priority to put our kids first, right? We want to make sure that we have the programs to help them to reach, to thrive academically, athletically, artistically, and emotionally. And we've been making that investment, and we have to continue to make the investment to have competitive salaries for our staff because otherwise, if we don't offer competitive salaries in our districts, what will happen is we'll have people who come maybe straight out of college or as interns, they'll use Farmingdale as a training ground, but then they're going to leave us and go someplace else where the salary is competitive. So we have to offer a competitive salary. And we constantly talk about being top-heavy in our expenses with our administration. Meanwhile, our district has less administrators than some of our comparable districts. And the salaries of our administration is only makes up three point two percent of our budget. And so I want us to make sure we listen very carefully, and you look at the data yourself on the website because some of our opponents are very creative with numbers and facts. You know, you need to have it.
Spoken like a true representative of the union. So here's where you're at. Let's be civil. Once again, the role of the school board is to be a steward of the taxpayers and negotiate fair contracts for the teachers. We are seeing way too often that the school board represents the union and possibly even being picked, handpicked by the union. I don't know. The importance of local control is something that we all should be looking at. We are taking more and more state aid and every dollar, and as well as increasing our local tax dollars. And every dollar of state aid we take, we lose local control. Masks as an example, but also most recently, the school mascots, all the districts that have an Indian mascot have to have them removed. This is a local decision, that shouldn't be a decision made by the state. And this is what's going on, is every time the state pushes something down, we have to accept it because we don't maintain local control or advocate for it. I'm speaking. Do you want to be up here?
We are gonna stop this forum if we cannot have quite more.
Without local control, we don't have a community that can maintain our budgets and make informed decisions about how it's being spent. The unions have too much power right now and are influencing how our budgets are being spent, and that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, due to the time, we're now going to go into our closing statements. Closing statements, you will have two minutes. And before we begin those closing statements, I would like to thank you all for demonstrating your civil responsibilities for attending this event. I would like to thank the candidates and the orderions for the respect you have shown throughout this evening. I would like to thank Farmingdale Council of PTAs for hosting this forum tonight and allowing the Nessa region to conduct this forum. Your school budget vote will take place on Tuesday, May sixteenth. We're gonna start with Matt, you have two minutes.
Thank you again for participating tonight. No matter who you're here for, this is a wonderful show of civic involvement, but turnout is probably double what I even thought. Now you get to use your vote, that grand American blessing fought and earned for us by generations past. Now you get to choose the future of Farmingdale Education and the chance to lead the way on Long Island. If you reflect on our answers tonight, I think you'll see two different types of stakeholders being served. Barbara, Parsha, and I are here to serve the children and the taxpayer, where we'll work well in partnership with others, but we're here to represent the children and the taxpayer. Unfortunately, I see those of running against, again, serving the entrenched status quo education establishment, an establishment of unions, of bureaucracy, of big-time school district law firms, Albany, and big publishing companies. I'm hearing their answers, and it's the same situation I've seen since I started following the board. And that situation, and my belief is that the Farmingdale School Board has become more and more an extension of the school district itself instead of its oversight, the governing body that it's supposed to be. How do you feel that trustee Jones was appointed with no election, that you have to be handpicked by the board to serve on it? How do you feel that the Farmingdale Teachers Union is offering raffle prizes to members to vote against us or put up lawn signs against us? How do you feel the board president? How do you feel to see a board president engaging in childish feedback, excuse me, childish Facebook arguments with his constituents? Look at what that does to discourage future civic participation. Would you step up to offer to serve knowing that you'd be attacked by a sitting board president and have entire unions compete against you? We clearly struck a nerve by the basic call for basic accountability in a public institution just by offering some fresh new perspectives. On a May sixteenth, that entrenched machine doesn't get to choose the next school board. You do. It'd be my honor to serve you, and I have to thank my best friend, my beautiful wife, Carolyn, for supporting me. God bless you all.
As far as being in a trampled school board, I think if you asked the union if they were happy with their last contract, the tenor of the discussion would be quite different. So you really don't know what we're talking about. As far as attacks online, if attacks mean using the words that Parsha, Barbara, and Matt had used and use their own words against them, I guess that's an attack. I'm proud to say that during my nine years of service as Board of Ed trustee, my colleagues and I have been interlude to transformative changes in our district. Our decision to hire Paul Depp and Dean as superintendent was our best decision. Paul's passion complements ours perfectly, and together, we have achieved great incredible things. During my tenure, the district has made remarkable advances in safety measures. We've reviewed and approved responsible, fiscally-proved budgets that have stayed within the tax cap levy while being mindful of our taxpaying dealers and the needs of our students. Our children have never had more choices when it comes to academics. The rigor of our refined and improved curriculum is remarkable, and the proof is seen in the diverse array of opportunities that our graduates have earned. Our music and fine arts department is one of the best in America. And our sports complex and aquatic center have given our student athletes the best facilities on which to compete. We have made great strides in serving our special education students, and yet we strive to improve those services. I am excited about our future. From blue ribbon designation and closing the chief regret, to the awe-inspiring goals of our portrait of the graduate to be ever vigilant about safety, I will continue helping our dealer children achieve the greatness that is within them. Together with our hardworking and committed teachers, teaching coaches, directors, administrators, and most importantly, you, parents and guardians, we shall provide every child with a personalized pathway to success. I promise you that being a selfless servant to all dealers above self will always be my guiding light as I forge ahead in service to this amazing district. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Barbara?
So we can be proud dealers while also recognizing we can no longer sit on the bench and hope others will solve the very serious challenges facing our community. Myself, Matt, and Parsha have been putting in the work, not only criticizing or critiquing problems, but coming to the table with solutions because that's what leaders do. We identify a problem, inform the community, and propose solutions to solve it. Members of this community have made outlandish statements and accusations against myself and others, all because we dared to challenge status quo. We have been the recipients of personal childish attacks from the sitting board president, all because we dared to challenge his power. Had Ralph put as much energy into his role as the Board of Education president as he has to attacking parents of this community who have stood up for all children for years now, then maybe his seat wouldn't even be challenged right now. But the fact is, he didn't. For nine years, he's rubber-stamped budgets with zero critical analysis or oversight. He rubber-stamped curriculum that is filled with political bias. He himself has acknowledged in writing the existence of a document available to our middle school children allowing them to change their gender and pronouns without parental consent. My life would have been a lot easier if I simply just fell in line, but it wasn't an option. My children are watching, your children are watching, and they're watching to see if anyone in a position of power will stand up to protect them and protect their innocence. I know we didn't get to answer all of the questions tonight. I welcome anyone to reach out to me, Matt, or Parsha, and we'd be happy to discuss any questions further. Vote on May sixteenth, and I look forward to serving you on this board.
About twenty years ago, I had an opportunity to visit a college prep school in Lawrenceville, New Jersey, New Jersey. And I was taken on a tour, and I saw the campus, and it was a beautiful campus. They had wonderful facilities, they had a robust catalog of courses and electives, they had teachers who were thought leaders in their field, and they had state-of-the-art everything. And at that time, I lamented about why public schools couldn't look like that. And then fast forward a few months ago, I had the privilege of joining the curriculum committee on the learning walk through our schools. And to my pleasant surprise, I saw that from our elementary schools through the high schools, we have great facilities, we have great campuses, we have a robust catalog of courses like the Innovation Lab, the media studio where elementary students get to create a news broadcast every week. We have woodshop, we have the CTE programs, we have all of these wonderful things. We have master teachers and administrators who are experts in their field and award-winning academic, athletic, and artistic programs. The Farmingdale School District has good bones, and I keep saying that. But the problem is, it's inept. The public education that we offer that really has that we offer that really has private school amenities on par with some private schools, what we have here is fantastic, but it's in jeopardy, because if we allow our district to be led by Parsa, Barbara, or Matt, they will dismantle the curriculum that we have and institute a curriculum that they no longer want to own up to, a curriculum
Quiet, please.
that would promote a seventeen-seventy-six curriculum, having history
Quiet, please.
embracing historical facts, wanting to sanitize our history to target a particular audience. And that's concerning to me, because we need people who are going to be honest about what their real intentions are. They have an agenda, and it's not our children's best interest. And we need to remember that.
Quiet, please. Parsa?
Sanitizing our history, spoken like a true champ of critical race, Derek. Thanks. Thank you all for coming out tonight. For those watching at home, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please be quiet. No, please stop. Please be quiet, and please remember to be civil to each other. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please.
I like to start with, I know. If the board would calm down, they're the loudest here. I'd like to thank all of you for coming out tonight and for those watching at home. When I ran for the school board last year, I was taken aback by the personal attacks by members of the school board, all for a volunteer position. I've never been afraid of confrontation and coming out out of my comfort zone. In fact, it's when I feel most alive. I definitely will never stay silent when it comes to our children's education and safety. You know, there's gonna be a time, hopefully long down the road for all of us, where we're gonna rely on our deathbeds. We'll remember our family, our successes, failures, and we may have regrets about some things. One thing I may never have a regret about is running to serve our Farmingdale community. We're all at the crossroad right now, and we all have the power to choose which path Farmingdale will travel. Will we continue to suffer academically without accountability from our administration? Will we continue to raise property taxes, forcing hard-working, lifelong dealers to abandon their homes and move? Will we suffer the nightmare of a dangerous incident at school and ask, why didn't we do more to protect our children? We live in a world where standards and meritocracy have gone out the window. We live in a district where parents' grievances and concerns are meant to insult and slander. Matt, Barbara, and I always ask, and we've done all that we can do. We understand that there is no substitute for accountability, and we have a clear vision for success. We've done more as candidates to uncover what we can improve in our district than the sitting board members. Just imagine what we can do for our children's academics while being fiscally responsible with your hard-earned tax dollars. The time has come and the choice is clear. If you want vague-for-all messaging with no concrete plan, then vote for the establishment. If you want three parents that were fiercely advocating for your children, for you as the parent, for you as the taxpayer, then we humbly ask that on May sixteenth, you vote even and elect Wilson, Alun, and Kareem. Thank you.
Sure, so once again, thank you to the Farmingdale Council of PTAs for hosting tonight's event, and thank you to NASSA Region for coming out to moderate this event. As I've shared, I've been an active volunteer for the school district for the last seven years, and I have been a dedicated educator for the last seventeen years. What I haven't shared is that one of the things that drives me to continue working inside my profession, it brings me so much joy, is the level of advocacy that I've done in my profession. I've worked closely with families to make sure that families are aware of their rights, and that they make sure that they do everything possible in their power to make sure that their children are getting exactly what it is that they need and the best of the school systems. I'm running for the Board of Education because I feel that my experience and expertise as an educator would be a valuable asset to our school board, sorry, to our Board of Education. I'm someone who has experience, looking closely at different curriculum and helping to make important decisions about that. I'm someone who spends my days serving students, and I feel that my perspective and insight from my career make me uniquely suited to serve in this position. My number one priority, should I be elected to the Board of Education, is to make sure to listen to all stakeholders, including teachers, students, parents, and community members. Keeping the lines of communication open and making sure everyone feels heard is a top priority for me. I'm someone who works collaboratively to solve problems, sorry. I'm reflective, I'm responsive, I'm an advocate. If elected to the board, I promise I will do everything in my power and work tirelessly to serve as our amazing dealer community. Thank you.
Again, I want to thank all of our candidates for coming out this evening, and have a good night, everyone. Get home safe, and don't forget to vote on May sixteen.